This time I call the April meeting of the County Commission to order. Is that mess? During this Masters Week. We have with us tonight. He's got several titles, but the most important title he has is Reverend. But he also owns Bart's Hot Dog Sandwiches all in town. So if you haven't eaten with him, you might want to go by and eat with him. Reverend Gray is the pastor of the Pine Grove United Methodist Church. Pastor, if you will, come and lead us in our invocation. Commissioner Collins, you will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance after the prayer.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we come before you this afternoon to lift up our commissioners as they discuss important matters regarding our community. I ask for your guidance and wisdom for each of them as you are the source of all knowledge and understanding. Give them your direction in their decision-making process. Give them open hearts and minds to hear your voice and seek to understand different perspectives. Give them discernment to make the best decisions for the greater good. We trust you, Lord, as our guide, and we ask that you guide them on this path. And we pray that you lead them to reach decisions that will reflect your will. May their words and actions be guided by your love and your grace. In your mighty name we pray. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, preacher. Item four is approval of the minutes. Is our motion that we approve the minutes?
As I move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins in discussion on the minutes. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, and the motion is carried. Item five is the approval of the agenda. Is our motion that we approve the agenda front and back as presented?
How do they get motion, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins in discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, motion is carried. Item number six is Departmental Report, six eight, Office of Emergency Services Director Broom. Director Broom is not with us. He's on vacation this week. His report is in your book. Six B is the Recreation Department Director Blaze. He's in there. I think splash pads opened and he's got you some other things that's going on out of Direct Complex and what will be going on. Director Blaze is in Destin Beach, Florida, so he's not with us. Six C is the Finance Department Director. Doss is not on vacation, but he's here with us, Director Doss.
Chairman and Commissioners, you have our printed reports, and I don't have anything else to add to those. And I have your cash balances when you're ready.
Okay, any questions to Director Doss? There's not any. Director, you going through what you usually do?
Yes, sir. Cash balances for the month ending March of 2024. General Fund, $4,068,547. The SPOLOST seven fund, $1,675,228. The American Rescue Plan Fund, $1,106,199. The T SPOLOST or Transportation SPOLOST Fund, $974,554. The Emergency Fund, $302,831. The Water Reserve Fund, $254,038. And the Water Fund, $209,184. We have several other funds, but those are our major funds. Total cash in bank for all funds at the end of March was $10,838. Our investment accounts are Raymond James twelve-month CDs, one day and $625,000. Our Raymond James Enhanced Savings Account, $515,991. We have $2 holding for transfers. Our total in our Raymond James account is $2,140,993. Our total of cash and cash equivalents at the end of the month for March of 2024 was
Director Doss?
Yes, sir, Chairman.
Raymond Jones holding for transfer, $2. Do you have any idea? Can you tell us what you're planning on doing with that large amount of money?
That was just a few dollars worth of interest, Chairman.
Any questions, Director Doss? Okay, moving right along. Six D is Public Works Department. We don't have a Public Works Director. So we gonna yield that one. You do probably have some reports in there. I haven't even looked at that. But we do have six E, and we do have a Director of Community Development, Department Director, Stephanie Iker. You come pull the microphone down and speak real good into that microphone where I can hear you, start that little soft part.
Chairman and Commissioners.
There you go.
You have my reports. You have any questions?
Okay, you got her report. I noticed the building permits were up. In fact, we did more building permits in March than we did January, February put together. That's good. Any questions to Director Iker?
One.
Commissioner Tankersley.
Out of those permits, how many of those was new home construction?
All of them.
All of them? Sixty-nine?
No.
Eight. Yeah.
Eight new single-family homes.
At the very top.
Then you got your, all your other permits, like, all you. You got it. Any other questions? Thank you. Don't go too far. Item number seven. Mr. Harris, if you would, make your way through the podium, state your name and your address. You have five minutes to address the board. While he's walking up there, for those that don't know, he's a classmate of mine. I know he looks a lot older than me. But he is a classmate of mine. He's gonna talk to us a little bit about L and N Road over in District Three.
My name is Melvin, I live on Level Nine, Level Nine of L and N Road. Been there for thirty years. My concern about L and N Road because I'm a citizen of Lincoln County. I live on that road. They have buses going there every day. They have trash trucks once a week. You have UPS, you have FedEx all over on that road. And the road getting in a terrible shape. My dishes filled with water when it rains. I'm being a citizen of Lincoln County. I pay my taxes, and I want something dead about it. It's as fair as I can be.
Mr. Harris, I got good news for you.
All right, get it.
Commissioner Clyde and I were down there Tuesday morning early. And we met with the company that's gonna come in and do some work, not only on L and N Road, but on Elam Drive, Melvin Norman Drive, Mary Jones Circle, as well as Wells Road and White Rock Road. Got a little place, but I think you'll be satisfied when we get through all the places that we did. I think it's about twelve patches to be done. About four of them, I believe, if I remember correctly, was done by the County Water Department and water leaks, the sewer leaks that we had to do. But I think you're gonna be happy. All that's gonna be fixed. We were hoping that they would be down there the day of tomorrow and get started before you got here, but the rain has stopped. So you call me back next week and thank me, yeah?
I'm gonna hold the commission to your word.
Huh?
I'm gonna hold y'all to your word.
What'd he say? Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna hold you to your word.
I got you. I got the price list right here and gave no care to get started.
I reckon don't fix it, you gonna see me again.
I know you fix it. They don't get started by Wednesday, you come see me, unless it rains.
I'm gonna see Mr. Cooper first, then I'm gonna see you next.
We gonna get you.
All right.
I think you'll be happy.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, for coming and sharing that with us. Item eight is the Convenience Center Fees, Director Iker. While she's approaching the podium, as most of you know and those who will be watching on YouTube, we have a work session that lasted about two and a half hours last week. Most of these agenda items, we have gone over, and we know what they are, so we can move through them pretty quick tonight. Go ahead.
Chairman and Commissioners, you should have the current Convenience Center fees in front of you. We're proposing that...
Steph. Pull that microphone up to you. There you go.
We're asking for some updated fees for the Convenience Center. These fees that you're currently looking at have been in place since 2006.
You have the list. I think I saw this list, the Lincoln Journal's in here, but I think I saw it in the paper today, the prices of what we're doing. It'll be on the website probably in the morning. Most of this will hit the website in the morning that we do it. Y'all have the list of it. It's, you know, some of it's gone up a dollar, and some of it's gone up a little more. But you did call surrounding counties and check with them, and this has put us... We haven't had an increase. You may have said it's hadn't had an increase since 2006, and all of our stuff's increasing. Commissioners, y'all have seen it. We've talked about it. Unless there's an objection from one of y'all, I'm not gonna read every one of them. But if there is, I'll entertain a motion to adopt it as presented to us.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson in discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, the motion is carried. Item number nine is meter replacements, Director Iker.
Chairman and Commissioners, the Water Department has an annual water audit, and this last year we had some pretty significant water losses. We've kind of put in place a program where we want to start replacing these meters as we can. We started with the first six large meters that you have in front of you and the replacement cost for each of those.
Okay, we have discussed all this. Most of them are down at the Boy Scout Camp, Cherokee Park, a few other places. I think the cost of this, the total cost of this is what, somewhere around $30,000?
Yes, sir.
You may have said that too, and I couldn't hear. We have looked at it. We've discussed it and talked about it. It would be paid for out of American Rescue Plan ARP money. I need a motion to approve up to $30,000.
I'll make motion, Mr. Chairman.
Now, the motion is our second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins in discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, motion is carried. Director Walter, if you would, sit there if that gets on the website. And if you didn't see it, it's in the paper today. You can see it. I think it listed all of them. Item ten is the Savannah Bay Well Quotes, Director Iker.
Chairman and Commissioners, I'm gonna have Water Superintendent Michael Newman come up. He knows all about this and the replacement.
Okay. While he's coming, we got our Water Superintendent. We call it Utilities now. He does a good job. He's taken on a lot of responsibility the last few months to help out in the Board of a Public Works Director, and we appreciate that. We have also talked about this, but if you would highlight it a little bit for the public here, we'll move on.
Chairman, members of the board, these are quotes that we have for replacing our well up at Savannah Bay. This well has a standing pipe that has deteriorated, and needs replacing in order to furnish water to this subdivision.
Okay, gentlemen, y'all have this. We, let me give a short, little brief deal on why we recommend Okonni well drillers. They have been, they have been, they have been dealing with the county, with EMI, our county engineers, since the beginning of our wars. They did drill and hook the wells up, and they do a lot more with the other things they got. But I think we got, we got a... Okonni well is $11,827.50 percent. Gun is $11,934. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Their motion, it must be paid out of ARP money. Is their motion, then, that we accept low bid of Okonni well drills?
I so moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins in discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tankersley.
On that bid right there, I see the actual cost of the well installation. What is the other column over there? It totals out $15,427.
So the additional $3,500, when we first had this situation, we had to call Okonni Wells to come in and help inspect what the problem was. In doing so, they also pulled everything out of there, so the interior of the structure is completely removed now, so nothing that, that was why the $800 was deducted from Gunter well drilling as well. They have already removed everything. The only thing we have to do is the installation now.
Any other questions?
So are we gonna pay them the $15,427? That'd be the total cost?
The $3,500 was deducting what the problem was and the removal.
So regardless of what, who we go with, we still owe the $3,500?
That is correct.
Any others? All in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, motion is carried. You turn over to that item number eleven is next. This is, this is a two-part thing, it's gonna take two votes. Water Plant Control System. Superintendent Newman, if you take that.
Yes, sir. So this is for the pipework that will be done at the Double Branches Water Tank. There are currently some pipes that are needing to be replaced. In front of you, we have quotes and what the project will take. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer for you.
Okay, this is the pipework at the water plant on Double Branches Road. I know, we talked about this the other day, too. What we got is we got a, we got a, did you get a firm quote anytime this afternoon from H and H?
Yeah, so H and H reached out to me about 4:30 this afternoon. The short of it is, they said they were looking at probably the original cost they gave us, it would probably be about double that.
About double that eighteen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that being said, it took him all week, I know, to get it, 'cause he told me every day he's been talking, trying to get it. The low bid, the low bid, it looks like to me, on this Ashland contract, and this is $21,400. Estimated time is two to three weeks to receive the parts, and then about days or so to fix that. Is there a motion that we give this to Ashland Contract at $21,400, and that's ARP money too?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Now, the motion is our second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Tankersley, second by Henderson. Any discussion?
I'll go with stay, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Collins is abstaining because his son-in-law is Ashland Contract President. Let the record show then that motion by Tankersley, second by Henderson, and all in favor of motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote with the abstention of Commissioner Collins. I mean Commissioner Clyde. If you turn back over to the, in the middle of this same section of eleven to ZIL, is that how you pronounce it? You'll see that, Mr. Newman.
So this is the update for the PL system that actually controls the entire water system. The PLC is kind of what controls everything that happens in that plant. The ZIL technology quote that we have is for, to update the system to a next-gen operation. The other quote is to repair it as is. Any questions you have on this, I'd be happy to answer for you.
If you add them all up, it looks like you're around $25,000 with that Timsco.
That is correct.
ZIL is $26,598. That's, if we talked in the work session, this is the company that deals with somebody else that's in California.
Timsco, that is correct.
We have a hard time dealing with them, and we are recommending that we go with with ZIL.
ZIL Technology.
They are Georgia-based, I guess.
They are.
And they can cover, you notice it's a six-week timeframe once we notify them to make the panel, and estimated time on site is two days, and we already been out about three or three months or four months at that plant. This will also be paid out of ARP money. We'd like to recommend that we take this from ZIL for $26,598. But before, no, I'm gonna call it a motion. Is there a motion that we accept ZIL?
I'll make motion, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner, five, second by Commissioner Collins. Discussion.
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tankersley.
Did we get the price on the electronic actuators?
So CCNA and EMI, who I've both contacted, they are currently out of state right now on projects, but they will be getting back with me next week. If we go with the ZIL tech or the other route, we still have a four- to six-week time period to get estimates. And those electronic actuators can be installed at any point before or during the installation.
We still waiting on a quote on that.
Yeah.
And Commissioner, we really think we need to go with Al, I mean the electric part of it.
I know, too.
And it might cost us just a little bit more, but if, but this is built in with the other one, did you tell me that back out about $1,500?
$1,500, yes.
I know you was talking over that for some reason. I can't, I can't hear. Okay, any other questions? All in favor of motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, motion is carried. Item number twelve is the text change to County Ordinance Number 34 dash, that's Section 34 dash 522. If you will look at your paperwork on the first page, Mr. Attorney, keep me straight, but this is, this is only a text change, a text change by ordinance we could do tonight. We could vote on it. What this is doing is clarifying something because we got a tiny house ordinance that's coming up a little later that takes the thing. It's, we have always said you had to have a minimum of a thousand square foot. You could have a bunch of porches around it. What this simply does is it changes it to a thousand square foot of heated space. And I told you, I talked to a couple of builders last time, and the thousand square feet, they don't build this and that anyway. But it clear, it clarify that up, particularly with going in with the timeout. Is there a motion that we make this text change?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Collins in discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, motion is carried. Director Pardon, you would make your way to the front. She is the director of the Lincoln County Library, and she needs some new shelves.
Chairman and Commissioners, I was coming today to ask you to approve a purchase of new library shelving. You have the updated quote in front of you. It did go up by $9 just because freight went up a little bit, but that is the final quote without sales tax or anything.
So it was $7,684.21. What is it now?
It's $7,684.21.
Tell me what she said.
$6,000.
Huh?
It's $7,684.21.
$6,800, $6,684?
$7,000.
Seven dollars? Chair, you got that?
Yes, sir.
I don't know why y'all don't speak plain. Anyway, it went up how much?
$9.21.
Straighten me out tomorrow, Chair.
Yes, sir.
There are motion, we've approved the request for the shelving that went up $9 since last week. It ordered. This will be paid for from the Dover Park.
We'll reimburse the general fund from it, yes, sir.
You, Director Doss, got that straight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There are motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, motion is carried. Item number fourteen is additional security cameras. We discussed this at length, Director Walter.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, funding is requested to install thirty-six additional cameras at county facilities. Four locations will receive their first cameras, while four other locations will have additional cameras installed. This project will improve the security of county facilities and staff, including 911 Communication Center. It will also improve the usability of some of our existing cameras. I request your approval of up to $27,000 for this project, and I think it's from the ARP funding.
Okay, we know where all these cameras are going, and adding some cameras at some different places. The motion is $27,000?
Yes, sir.
To be paid for through American Rescue Plan monies? There are motion that we approve the request of Director Walter.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, I mean by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion of camera?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Clyde.
I'm gonna stay on this, 'cause we kept a little bit with it.
You're gonna act like Richmond County. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, and let the record show, Commissioner Clyde abstaining. Your reason for abstaining was what?
That stuff I was doing a little bit of here.
Okay, his company's doing a little consulting work or something on this. All right, that took care of the cameras. Item fifteen is the finance policy on grants, Director Earned Doss.
Chairman and Commissioners, as we reviewed this policy, this policy essentially codifies what we've been doing. The policy requires department heads and county officers to bring a grant request to the chairman for approval, to apply for the grant. And then if the grant is awarded, the chairman and the department head or the county officer will bring the grant to the full Board of Commissioners, where the full Board of Commissioners will determine whether or not they want to receive the grant. This just codifies our existing practice, Chairman.
We discussed this a little bit at the work session. You heard the request. Is there a motion that we approve the grant administrative policy?
I'll make motion, Mr. Chairman.
Now, the motion is second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson in discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let me know saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, signed, motion is carried. Item sixteen is Department Family and Children Lease with Utilities. This was talked a good bit about, Director Doss.
Chairman and Commissioners, as we discussed the other day, our lease with the Department, with DFAX, Department of Family and Children Services, requires us to pay utilities. They paid the utilities for the first five years of that contract, and they're asking us to reimburse them. Our lease payment that we get does include additional money for utilities. So I would ask the board to authorize me to send $29,799.08, $29,799.08 back to the Department of Family and Children Services.
That doesn't include what we, what we paid the city back, does it? Or does that include what we paid?
That's, that's what we will pay. That's, that's what we will pay, uh, DFAX back. We are currently paying the bills today. We paid the, the water and the city bill this month. I mean, the power bill and the water bill this month.
Okay, we, um, we have, do we have a motion to approve the $29,799.08 to pay DFAX back?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion? Have a quick comment. If you remember right off your head, tell us what you told us last week, it was, we still weighed to the head because what happened is, is we, the rent went way, way up from what it used to be, and that, and that's the reason we were supposed to pay the utilities, some kind of way it slipped by.
We're, we're about $100,000 to the good over the last five years.
We're still about $100,000 to the good in the last five years, so. All in favor, mostly everyone saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carried. Item number 18, we getting down to what our six people here for?
Probably 17, is it 17?
17. What did I say?
18.
17. Solar Farm Ordinance is 17. We, uh, I know we have, somebody wants to speak up. Y'all want to speak? Okay, we're gonna allow you to come up. If you will, come state your name, company you with. Just for the record, I know you with solar. And, um, you have five minutes.
Okay, I want to get my question. I'm Morgan Crichton of Silicon Ranch, can you guys hear me okay? You may speak up, Bulvermore? Okay. All right, good evening. I want to thank the Commission, especially Chairman Norman and the members of the community for your thoughtful consideration, for how future developments will affect Lincoln County and the people who live and work here. I'm not here this evening to talk about a specific solar project. I'm just here to understand, like many other people, what the solar ordinance in the county means for the community, developers, and economic development. Solar farms bring significant investment with no additional capital investment required from the state, the county, or the utility. To date, through our projects, Silicon Ranch has invested $3 billion across the state of Georgia. Solar farms provide new tax revenue generation over the life of the project, which is an estimated 40 years, to support infrastructure and other community-identified priorities, requiring no government services in exchange. In the first 10 years of a project, we estimate that the county could collect $13 million in tax revenue for a solar project. During the same timeframe, the current use of property would generate less than $120,000. Solar farms bring hundreds of craft labor jobs during the construction phase, with a preference given to local hires and contractors and military veteran community. It's our mission to generate low-cost, clean, reliable energy and provide the land underneath the panels, the panels, excuse me, a resting period. Returning the land to the same condition or better than we acquired it is the foundation of our regenerative energy land management practice at Silicon Ranch. In conclusion, we simply request that the Commission allow additional time to further discuss and consider the significant value that solar projects can bring to the community, as well as support statewide economic development through responsible development. Thank you very much for your time.
This is the first reading of this, of the ordinance that will be dealing with solar farms. This will be in chapter 34, which is our land use, pardon, it's a new section, it'll be, I think it'll be chapter 34, section 599?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct, with what that would be? Is there anybody else here that wants to speak on the solar? Okay, the reason we do this, this is like a public hearing, so, um, I'll ask the county attorney, he will read it fast, not slow. Start the reading of it. At any point in time, one of you think we've read it enough, we can stop the reading. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As, as you said, this will require two readings, so during the interval, interval between today and our next meeting, the, these matters can be changed or enhanced. Chapter 34, section 599, definitions. The following words, terms, and phrases when used in this chapter shall have the meanings described to them in this section, except where the context clearly indicates a different meaning. One, solar energy system means a device or structural design feature that provides for the collection of solar energy for electricity generation, consumption, or transmission, or for thermal applications. For purposes of the Lincoln County zoning code, SES refers to, one, photovoltaic SES that converts solar energy directly into electricity through a semiconductor device, or two, solar thermal systems that use collectors to convert the sun's rays into useful forms of energy for water heating, space heating, or space cooling. SES as used in the Lincoln County zoning code excludes concentrated solar power, which uses mirrors to focus the energy from the sun to produce electricity. Number two, integrated solar energy system means an SES where solar materials are incorporated into building materials such that the two are reasonably indistinguishable, or where solar materials are used in place of traditional building.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Without objection, I would ask that we suspend the reading. We'd be here a long time reading this thing, it's pretty in-depth. For those of you that are interested, though, it will be on the website tomorrow. I know a lot of you already have it, but it will be for the public to look at. This is being considered our first reading, and, uh, anybody that'd like to talk to any Commissioner or be of the county attorney, they're welcome to do that in the interim. And again, next month, we will have a public hearing like we thought, like we did tonight, if anybody wants to speak for or against it. Now motion, we suspend the reading?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde, suspend the reading, first reading. Any questions? All in favor, mostly everyone saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carried. Item 18 is the tiny homes ordinance, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as, uh...
Mr. Jackson, excuse me, before you start, let, let me say that we have, we have met new, I don't know how many times, several different times over the last six, eight months, but in the last month, we probably met more than we have the rest of the time together. I did see this, I said last time, maybe in the work session, we have two people that wanted, wanted it, and I think the clerk sent the, sent the tiny home draft ordinance to Ms. Ann Scott, who's on the planning commission, and to Ms. Lynn Blanchard, who said that she'd like to look at it, see if she had any input. So, this will also be put on the front page of, the little button you click on the website for people to look at, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, Mr. Chairman, this, uh, being a brand-new ordinance and numerous ordinances within it, this will require two readings, therefore it will be read again at the next meeting. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, an ordinance, let's see, ordinance regarding Georgia State Minimum Standard Codes and International Residential Code, or Appendix Q for Tiny Houses, and ordinance regarding enforcement of the Georgia State Minimum Standard Codes for construction and other purposes. Whereas the Georgia State Minimum Standard Code for construction promotes health, life, safety, and general welfare of all citizens, and whereas said codes are also designed to protect the property of all citizens, whereas it is the desire of Lincoln County, Georgia Board of Commissioners to adopt and enforce in all aspects certain appendices of various Georgia State Minimum Standard Codes for construction, and Appendix Q of the International Residential Code, and now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Lincoln County, Georgia, that it is the intent of the Board of Commissioners of Lincoln County, Georgia, to adopt and enforce the following appendices of said codes, as adopted and amended by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, and said codes are hereby adopted by reference as though they were copied herein fully. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed, and I'd be glad to begin reading the, uh, actual ordinances as well, Mr. Chairman.
Um, Mr. Jackson, let's just, let's do this, this is, uh, it has a purpose on it. It has definitions, and, and let me, let me highlight that part right quick.
Yes, sir.
Single-family home, no more than 480 square feet in a tiny home, nor less than 300 square feet in the tiny home. It has to be industrialized, it's not a stick-built on, on the, uh, is that raining? Not a stick, it's not a stick-built deal. It has to meet, as he said, all DCA regulations. That means that all tiny homes do not meet DCA regulations. You're gonna have to have DCA, you're gonna stick to it, you got the right plumbing, you got the right electrical, and it has to be up to code just like any other residential house would be done. Um, I think that's the biggest part of, that part of it, it, it also says that, uh, these will only be allowed in an A1 district. That's right. Only allowed in an A1 district. A1 district takes about 65 or 70% of all of Lincoln County. That's where you can put single, wide mobile homes and all, but an agricultural A1 district will be there. It also says in here somewhere that you can have, if a tiny home community, which we would like to see, if a tiny home community came, we'd work with them on that, and it also says that, uh, Commissioner Tankersley, four or three tiny homes may be located in agricultural zoning districts A2 or A3 only if the location of districts A2 or A3 is designated, approved, and registered as an existing hunting club by Lincoln County Land and Zone Commission. So if you in, if you have a, 2003, when all of the Stone had a lot of deer camps, they were grandfathered in, in 2003 when we went to this. So if a deer camp is in existence that was grandfathered in, then they are allowed to have a tiny home versus a camper, as long as it meets all the regulations of DCA and everything else, it has to be done. Also says you got to have a, a kitchen and a sink and all this stuff, you got to have a separate bathroom, you got to have the right ventilation, and no tiny homes. No tiny homes may be installed without a special use permit, so that means that any way you want to put one, then you have to do just like anything else, you got to go to planning commission, file for it, um, it will go through the process with the Planning and Zoning Commission, they'll recommend, make a recommendation to the county commission as to whether or not that's really a suitable place. So just because you are in A1 would not necessarily mean that you will be able to get a tiny home. You'd still have to go through the process and, and get a special use. So no tiny home can be done without that, so every tiny home would come before us. And it also says that any tiny home that's in the county to date, we have not permitted any tiny homes, we've got a mortarium home for seven months or so, if a, if it comes to light that a tiny home is in existence, that was never permitted, or I got a permit, like a building permit for the county, then we might let it stay, but it will have to meet all the regulations of any other tiny home. If it's not DCA-approved, doesn't have the right plumbing and electrical in it, then we cannot, we can not let you stay there. So that's, um, that's basically what this is, so I don't think we did much of the suspending of the reading between what we did, but this, it will be considered the first reading, is our motion that this be the first reading?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Collins on the first reading, I don't know if we even needed a motion for that, but anyway, we got it, in case we do. Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde, that this takes care of the first reading. Any discussion? Chair, there is none. All in favor, mostly everyone saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carried. These two will be back up next month, and I think I saw you, this will be on the website. Item number 19 is an annual event that comes up, and we try to help both of them, it's a, it's a two-week end deal in the county, about four or five thousand people will be in and out over the two-week period of time. The first weekend, I think in eight, uh, May, is the Little Roy and Lizzie Music Festival. That's a bluegrass, under-country music festival out at the Lewis Family Home Place. It's, it's a nice event. You hadn't been, you need to make plans, go get your ticket. It'll be people down the line, Little Roy and Lizzie, the Malthus Brothers, uh, they've been in it's country music, traveled with Merle Haggard for years, Rhonda Vincent, Queen of Bluegrass, will be there, member of the Grand Ole Opry, as well as country music singer Gene Watson, who's also a member of the Grand Ole Opry. You don't know his songs, it's a bunch of them, but I think his top song was the farewell party, that's when your husband, your wife run the husband off, it's the farewell party. I think you'd enjoy, you'd enjoy going. The following, the next weekend, same location, Lewis Family Home Place, Jeff and Sherri Easter will be having their annual homecoming, their Southern Gospel group that has been on all the Gatha videos, they travel with the, with all the Gatha stuff it have been for 20 or 30 years, and they have people like, I think I saw Carrie and Peg in New River, and I don't know, some of the, some of the big-name gospel group will be there for that weekend. And what we do is we try to support that with our hotel motel tax, and we have customarily over the last few years, given each group, um, $2,000, so that'll be $2,000 to Jeff and Sherri to help promote this, all our motels, campgrounds, people even camping, 100 campsites on-site, they full, all the campgrounds at the park, I understand even over Hickory Knob, they're staying. We give them a $2,000 a piece. I need this in separate motion, I think I put it all in one motion, then.
Yes, sir.
We give Jeff and Sherri Easter $2,000, Little Roy and Lizzie Music Festival $2,000, and this $4,000 will be paid from hotel motel taxes, is our motion.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, there is none. All in favor, mostly everyone saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carried. Item 20 is the one Commissioner Henderson's been looking for. I need a motion to adjourn, motion by Commissioner Henderson, that's second, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, there is none. All in favor, mostly everyone saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carried, we stand adjourned.